I apologize for our delay in starting the open session of the meeting. We did have an executive session for half an hour and a little bit over regarding the Nagod Pond Treatment Plant decision and the pending litigation. So, I will just, we'll resume open session. And the first item on our agenda, as always for any meeting, is citizens' concerns. It's an opportunity for people in the audience to make comments about issues that are not on our agenda. Mr. Nitschel.
Thank you. Chairman? Chairperson?
Chairman.
Chairman.
Madam Chairman.
Chairman. I'll say it quickly so you can't tell the gender.
I take no offense. I'm one of the few women I know who thinks that man is a permissible term for generic human person, you know.
Okay. Well, I share that.
And I'm liberated, too, so, honestly.
So, my name is Alan Nitschel. I live at 9 Marion Road in Acton. I'm here because I'm putting a citizens' petition on the town warrant along with my co-conspirators, Charlie Cadlec and Scott Spires. Scott is here tonight. And I wanted to come and read the warrant article, and if anyone had any questions, and also make a couple of comments about it. Whereas the New England Town Meeting is a cherished form of self-government which allows all Acton registered voters to participate in deciding the town's affairs, whereas true participation requires the right to freely state opinions, including criticism of the decisions and actions of elected and appointed officials. Whereas, as reported by Town Council Nina Pickering-Cook, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court has confirmed that criticism of a public official constituted political speech and was, quote, "at the core of the speech that the First Amendment to the United States Constitution protects." Now therefore be it resolved that no town official shall prohibit lawful speech at town board meetings or town meeting, including speech which criticizes elected or appointed officials by name or title for their decisions and/or the performance of their duties while in office. The summary reads as follows: On December 4th, 2017, Acton held a special town meeting to consider several articles, including one Article 1, to support the funding of a school building study. Prior to the presentation debate, Acton's town moderator read a preamble which sought to deny the First Amendment rights of voters to discuss the official conduct of their elected school committee representatives by name. This had a chilling effect on the debate. When one speaker, who shall remain nameless, attempted to criticize officials solely by title alone, he was also ordered by the moderator to move on. While we support courteous and civil discourse, the concept of not allowing voters to criticize their elected officials at a public meeting, especially when those officials are asking for additional funding or authority, is unacceptable. Such criticism, while perhaps unpleasant, is sometimes necessary for democracy to work. Officials who are elected or appointed agree to become public figures and thus cannot be immune to criticism at public speaking venues. Restrictions on the voters' freedom to express their views only discourages further citizen participation that everyone supports. I'll make my comments, and then if anyone has any questions. First comment is, this ruling by the moderator, Peter Ashton, was backed up by Town Council Nina Pickering-Cook. We received emails pursuant to a public document request. And Attorney Pickering-Cook approved this violation of the First Amendment. So I would like to urge the Board of Selectmen to replace Town Council and the firm that represents Acton for this violation. And second, I would make a public appeal to Moderator Ashton to be prepared to recuse himself from the debate on the sworn article since it involves his direct conduct. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Turn off the mic. I need to read a public notice, and then I just have one comment before my colleagues ask questions. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on February 26, 2018, at 7:10 p.m., continued from January 22, 2018, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall, 472 Main Street. Acton, on the application of EverSource for a grant of one stub pole installation on Hayward Road, Northerly Side, at the intersection of Main Street Acton, the application and accompanying plans can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. I would add that one of the things I communicated to Mr. Nitschel by email was that Ms. Pickering-Cook actually technically is not Town Council. It's her colleague, who was one of the founders of the Anderson-Kreger firm, Steven Anderson, who technically is Town Council. Ms. Pickering-Cook is obviously a partner, I guess, in the firm. And I think that she had requested, I don't know if you're prepared to respond, you can do it offline.
I am.
To request the source of the assertion that you attributed to her, so.
Sure.
Anyhow, but.
So my response, first, is that the emails that I refer to between Mr. Ashton and Town Council were, in fact, to Ms. Pickering-Cook. So she was acting as Town Council, whether that's her title or not, I really couldn't care. And as far as Ms. Pickering-Cook's question, she asked where the quote came from, and it came from her article. That's on her firm's website, which was written in 2016. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Any questions?
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Nitschel. Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. John Blute, Prior Hill Road in Acton, and a resident of this fine town for approaching 38 years. I have come late to looking more intensively at the water situation in Acton, especially vis-à-vis Concord and Littleton. I don't know how many of you were able to attend what I thought was a very, very well-done discussion and meeting at the First Parish Church on Sunday. It's quite well-done. There's a lot of discussion. What I would hope to move forward, as I'm digging deeper into what is not a simple matter in this area, but which is obviously very important to the health of everyone in these communities, is how this complex process might be done better. I hope to attend, if I am available, to the Acton Water Advisory Board. Is that correct term?
I don't know if you're talking about, you're not talking about the water district which supplies water to 95% of the town. Are you talking about the Water Resources Advisory Committee, which is an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen, appointed by the Selectmen to provide guidance upon?
Yes.
About, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, the Water Advisory Board.
Water Resources Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
W R A C, fondly known as a RAC.
So, it sounds just interesting. But my point is, and I know this has been a very complex issue for you new on the board, and I know this distantly because I must more recently getting involved and interested in this matter, particularly as I've seen the more recent data on the 1-4 dioxane and its apparent dissemination from the nuclear metals plant in Concord into the water area in this area. But to return to my point and my thrust, is there some other way that these three towns can get together outside of the courts and solve this problem? I spent many years working in healthcare in complex endeavors to achieve goals. Wasn't the easiest thing, but we were able to get it done. And I find that, when I learned how deeply this was enmeshed in litigation, and I have no idea what the ongoing costs are to each town and the citizens of these towns with respect to this, it's of concern. And I was wondering if it is, if it is possible to step back and get the best of the informed people in these three towns to come together and see if this, this complex matter can be resolved in that way, as opposed to other ways. And that would be my question and my hope that I could bring to this board, as well as citizens and others in the three communities.
And where typically with citizens' concerns, we don't respond, but I will just say that there are other people who have the same idea in mind, and that is actually part of the ongoing discussion that the board is involved in regarding the litigation that's ongoing. So, but it's complicated, as you will find if you're just starting to get into the details.
Well, I've seen a small piece of the complexity of this, but as everyone in this room is aware, it is essential for life, and safe water is very important for the future. So.
I don't think anybody would disagree with you on that.
I wouldn't think anyone would be disagreeing. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Blute. Anybody else? Citizens' concerns, issues that are not on our agenda?
Helmut Neem, Steve Cornell, and I'm from Great Road, Acton. Last week during the board meeting, one of the members referred to our firefighters as men in uniform in clown, in costumes, sorry. That was kind of offensive to me, and.
Who was that? I, are you?
We didn't, we didn't meet last week. Do you know?
No, I mean not last, the 13th.
We didn't talk about firefighters.
Wait, are you, are you talking?
Oh, Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, I think this might have been somebody at the Finance Committee, perhaps, but it wasn't a board of Selectmen member.
Because there was, there was a present, I'm the liaison to the Finance Committee from this board, and they did hear a presentation about, from the fire chief, about a proposed, proposal for study, design study, with regard to a potential North Acton fire station. I don't know why else the FinCom would have been talking about a fireman, fire department. But we, they do meet in this room and sit at these tables, so, were you watching on TV or were you sitting?
It's all over YouTube, him literally saying men in uniform in costumes. And it's pretty insulting having buried two of my best friends who died in the line of duty.
Okay. No, I would agree. I honestly don't remember that comment. I was sitting there, but sometimes I don't pay close attention. I'm sitting in the audience, looking at my phone, and sometimes I miss critical comments, but I'll.
If you want to watch it, it's at, on Acton TV, 2 minutes 40 seconds through 2 minutes and 50.
Okay, well, I'll take a look to find out who, because we all know who are on the boards and the boards that's sitting, so it may have been the Finance Committee. But yeah, that doesn't sound, it doesn't sound like us at all, so, okay. But I saw, I'm sorry for that, so, you know, we certainly want to respect our public service safety employees, as they do a lot of wonderful work to keep us all safe, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Public, citizens' concerns? All right. Chairman update very quickly. The Douglas School Read Aloud Day is this Friday, the 2nd. There are some Selectmen, plus many years or most years, a town manager who have participated annually in the time that I've been on the Select, the board. Discovery Museum is having the celebration of the renovated, expanded building this Saturday. The Selectmen will notice that I put outgoing copies of Board of Selectmen correspondence that goes out between meetings in the extra information folder because it's publicly accessible. It's so that the rest of the board will know what I've written in, you know, with their authorization, and also so that the public can know about what the outgoing correspondence is. And finally, the next Board of Selectmen meeting is next Monday, March 5th. We will be having an executive session starting at 6 o'clock. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, Acton Leadership Group will be meeting Wednesday morning at 7:30, pretty much to finalize the spreadsheet and look at the outer years. We did meet on the 8th and received, reached consensus on the, on the FY '19 budget. Also wanted to announce that our senior planner, Kristin Gishard, had a little baby girl a week ago Thursday, Grace, and everybody's doing fine.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And now we will go to our 7:10 hearing about the EverSource stub pole. We did have a discussion about this a while ago, and unfortunately, I guess you or your colleague weren't able to attend, and so we just speculated about, there were people in the audience who were very concerned about it, and unfortunately, we on the board weren't really able to enlighten them, so I hope that you will be able to enlighten us about what is exactly is going on. But I guess it involves a tree that's in bad shape and removing something and putting it somewhere else, so, please, go ahead.
Christine Cosby, EverSource Energy. And we're looking to obtain a grant, a location for a new pole, it's a stub pole, out at the intersection of Hayward Road and Main Street. Presently, there is a tree there that is, you know, scheduled to be removed. The town wants to remove the tree. It's not healthy, it's safety, safety issue. But currently, it's guided by a tree guy to provide additional support to the, to the pole that's out there. The stub pole would take place of the tree guy, the removal of the tree.
Questions, comments from the board? Peter.
Can you describe a stub pole for me, please?
It looks like your typical pole that's out in the public way, but they're generally smaller, and there's a guide wire that is attached from the top of the pole to the pole that needs the additional support.
Okay, so it's not one of these three-foot lengths that's clamped onto the top of the pole?
No, no.
Okay. The other question I saw in the backup to this was whether the, whether EverSource is going to take down the tree or not, or is it going to leave that for the town? Just a question.
I believe it's the town, it's removing the tree. It was a request that was put in from Dean Shatter back in 2016.
Right, I saw that, but I think there was a question whether you would normally take the tree down if you were taking the guy out of there or not.
Yeah, no, not that I know of, yeah.
Anybody else? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve EverSource's application for an installation of a stub pole at the intersection of Hayward and Main Street.
Katie Moos and Joan Secondes. Any further discussion? Any questions from the audience? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is, now we're moving to Selectmen's business. We have a site plan, proposed amendment to 976 Main Street Method Machine Tools, Inc. I don't know if anybody is here from Method Machine Tools. Okay, great. I am the assigned Selectman for this, nothing onerous, but if you want to just briefly explain what the project is about, I can fill in what I know from having looked at the plan and also attended some meetings of one of our advisory boards, so.
Certain, certainly. I don't know if there was, I was told there was going to be some views on the screen. She's moving, I don't know what's happening. Real quickly, I'm Jeffrey Brem. I'm the engineer of Meister Brem Corporation for Methods Machine Tools. The facility is the, the old Somerville lumber building. It hasn't been really worked on since it was Somerville lumber, and so now the program is to change the facade of the building to make it look more of a industrial building for an industrial user, as opposed to retail facility. And with that, there's a long-term plan to do some improvements to the landscaping, the facade on the front, the entranceway, and so forth. So we put together, the original order from the board, site plan approval, said any changes would require the board's amendment, and that's why we're here. And that was back in the early 80s. So essentially, the site plan just shows a new facade on the front. I don't know if you want to pull up the, the one that says site plan, if you see one. Civil engineering, I guess, the last one down. So this is just going to be an image of the old site plan up above, and that's the building, and then we blew up, blew up the first, the front area where we're going to change the facade. The, I think you all know what the building looks like, and they're just going to put up new panels on the front and a new entranceway and change the vestibule. The net effect of all this is a slight increase in square footage. There's a 676 square foot increase in building square footage. That in and of itself does not trigger the special permit amendment. I believe the special permit amendment is because of the original condition. I don't know if you could figure out which one is the architectural one? But picture's worth a thousand words. It's probably the top one. Well, that's a floor plan. I can't see that far away. There's the details of some landscaping, so it's probably the second one down, I'm There you go. So that's what the facade will look like when it's all done, quite a bit different. The entranceway will be coming on the side, so you'll have a view of a bunch of glass, and then a sort of a industrial aluminum look, and then the Methods Machines logo and sign to the right. That's essentially the project. Long-term, they're going to change the landscaping, and if you want, you can try to look at that. I don't believe this is a requirement for the permits, but the Planning Department did say you may want to look at some of this. It's going to take a while to load. So there's the new entrance slowly loading. There it is. So there's the entrance, and some of the parking is going to be removed to the left of that plan. That darker green area, there's existing parking, we're going to take some spaces away. And the same with the lower right section, there's some spaces there that we're going to take away. They don't need that much parking for the facility. So they're, obviously, that'll be dressed up and look good for landscaping. That's the long-term plan. That's all. I'm sure you may have questions.
Yeah, I, I need to explain to the board that because the Planning Department, I didn't make the determination that this is an amendment. Planning Department said that because it was an amendment, what they considered to be a minor amendment, that we didn't need to have a full-blown hearing on it, which is why initially there was some talk about putting on the consent agenda, but because I wanted this, I wanted full discussion about it, even if it were brief, and I also wanted to let the applicant, applicant, talk a little bit about the improvements to the building, and also, I wanted to give credit to the Design Review Board, which has met with, I don't know if it's you or somebody else, but just most recently, they met with the landscape architect to talk about the long-term plans, and, and, you know, that's really, I think that that shows a lot of respect on the part of the applicant for, say, the Design Review Board or other boards that do work in our town. And I think that the DRB really appreciated certainly the long-term landscaping plans, but the scope of this amendment is really just the addition of the facade. One of the questions that came up at DRB had to do with stormwater bylaw. We have a new stormwater bylaw, which actually was a little bit slow in coming into existence, but, because it's complying with the, the federal stormwater management guidelines, which have been in effect since, I think, 2003, and, and they had a new permit issued for the area that now is on hold for a year because it's so complicated. But in any event, there, our, our stormwater bylaw doesn't really kick in unless you're having disturbance of 5,000 square feet. I don't know if at some point, when you're doing all that landscaping, that will kick in collectively, or, I can't, I have no sense of dimension, so I don't know if you even have.
No, there's more than 5,000. We're actually making a lot more, less impervious areas and more pervious areas, so it meets the stormwater bylaw, but.
But I think that what, what you should do is when you start to actually do, you know, a lot of the landscaping that you have long-term, you should probably confer with the town to make sure that you're not, and I know that the engineer, engineer, town engineer recommended that you at least, with regard to the current drainage system, clean out the drains, because maintenance is obviously often a problem. You have all these nice stormwater management systems, and then nobody inspects them, nobody cleans them out, and they don't function very well. So with that, having explained sort of the limited scope of this amendment, I'll open it up for colleagues to ask questions, make comments. Katie.
Just had one quick question. I think the DRB memo noted that you're planning to do the landscaping in two phases, and I was wondering if you could just talk about, is this the first phase, or is this the, what it would look like after?
This is the final phase, right.
Okay, and what would the two phases be?
The first phase is really the work around the building itself. We're taking out some sidewalks, I'm planting some new sidewalks, so it's, it's very, very basic. This is, what you see is the second phase.
Okay. Yeah, no, otherwise, I echo Jan's comments. I really appreciate how much you, you worked with and listened to the Design Review Board. I felt like that was very much reflected in what you put forward to us. There were a few comments from some of the departments, and those looked like they were addressed as conditions in the Planning Department's draft decision, so I felt like it was, it all looked good to me.
And when you say you, I know you're responding to me as the applicant, and I'm standing here.
Oh, sorry.
There's a team behind us, there's an architect, landscape architect, the owner's representative, and so forth, but I appreciate that.
Jan?
Yes. What is the timing for the second phase?
Within the next 18 months.
Oh, thank you.
Peter?
There's a couple of conditions that are in our draft decision that go back to the original special permit from the early 80s, I guess. One does deal with the stormwater drainage system, and this says you're going to, prior to the issuance of a building permit, you're going to show proof that you've complied with conditions 2.2 and 2.4 within, for 2.2 within the previous 12 months, and for 2.4 within the previous three months. So 2.2 talks about cleaning the, the catch basins and inspecting the detention infiltration Do you know if Machine has been doing that?
Machines, yes, they have, and John Flynn is with me here. He's responsible for that, so.
Okay.
He's done that, as well as the reports, as well as the hazardous waste issues as well.
Okay, and then there was apparently some underground monitoring wells. I don't know what concern the board in the early 80s had about the underground water that's, as you heard at the beginning of the meeting, a huge issue in town now. Are those wells still functioning, and you're still checking them every, I guess it says within the last three months?
Yes, they have been. Right, John? Yep. They're still there, they're still functioning, they're still accessible.
Okay, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Ching Sun, anything? Right. Would somebody like to make a motion? I would ask if you make a motion that you sort of include a provision about, well, some of the things that Peter mentioned, and also, well, just the issue of stormwater bylaw compliance, if somebody's going to make a motion.
Okay, let me give that a go. I will move to approve the Site Plan Special Permit, number 060287-284 amendment, with the conditions noted in the Planning Department's draft decision. Do you want an added condition? That they meet the stormwater bylaw? I mean, they.
For any changes, I think, to future changes.
Right. Yeah. And that, and that they meet the stormwater, the.
Just, yeah, just, because I, I, you know, I, I can't tell from the phase one of the landscaping if it's, you know, if it involves enough disturbance of, of soil or whatever. I understand that there's another part that has to do with addition of impervious, and you're taking away, but there's also a provision about 5,000 square feet of disturbed, disturbance also triggers the, the stormwater bylaw, so it would just.
So I'll say.
That's fine, that's fine.
The conditions in the.
Yeah, just check.
No worries.
I mean, we, that, 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 that stormwater bylaw was the, the work of years by the Water Resources Advisory Committee, and so.
No worries, we're fine.
Which I was leading, so I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're actually honoring its, its requirements, so.
Okay, so I'll make my motion with the conditions that are in the draft decision and the condition that they meet the requirements of the stormwater bylaw.
Second.
Katie Moos and Joan Secondes. Any further discussion? Any questions from the audience? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maple Street Acquisition. Mr. Manager and Mr. Barry, I assume you have all the knowledge about this, so.
Madam Chair, I would request that this agenda item be deferred till next Monday, and also request that we have an executive session on the subject Monday night prior to the Selectmen's meeting, as I feel a public discussion at this point would have a detrimental effect on reaching an agreement on money of the acquisition.
Okay, will do. Mr. Manager? And we've already, we had already talked about having a double-long executive session on Monday, so. Okay, next item, Selectmen to take positions on warrant articles and close the annual town meeting warrant. We heard at the beginning about one petition, warrant article, that will be added to the agenda, and there's a second one, whose proponent advised that she wouldn't be here until possibly 8:30, but the, our draft list of warrant articles. but the, our draft list of warrant articles does include her proposed warrant. We also, during executive session, I will just add that one of the topics was pertaining to this Article 26 placeholder for second night, and this is an article that pertains to water service on Route 2A from the Concord line to where the Concord pump station is, but that's all that I'm at liberty to say until possibly next week, so. Let's look at the articles.
Madam Chair, this is still in draft form, there's some details that have to be kind of filled in, so at this point, next Monday night would be the definitive warrant, but this is in some ways conceptual in some cases.
Well, it says to take position and close the warrant, so I guess, should we first close the warrant and then start taking positions and also assigning articles, does somebody want to move to close the warrant?
So moved.
Katie moves and Joan seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. And let's see, let's start by big, needy positions. Should we start with the major ones and then go to the little ones, or should we just start, okay, I mean, I don't, just go with.
I think it'd be easier to go in order.
Yep, okay, Article 1, does somebody want to move something?
I'll move to recommend.
Second.
Katie moves and Ching Tsung seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, Article 2.
Here and accept report, I will move to recommend Article 2.
Katie moves and Joan seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Item 3, budget transfer.
At this point, we don't anticipate one, so I would suggest deferring your recommendation.
On budget transfer, okay, defer, okay. Item 4.
This is our recommendation for whether or not we recommend the article. So you voted to recommend Articles 1 and 2. Article 3, we're probably gonna take no action, so we're gonna defer our recommendation, which is traditionally what we do on that one, because we almost never take action on it.
Item 4 is of town operating budget.
I will move to recommend Article 4.
Second, okay.
Okay, Katie moves and Joan seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Acton Boxborough, this is item, Article 5, Acton Boxborough Regional High, Regional School District Assessment.
I will move to recommend.
Katie moves, Joan seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Article 6, Miniman Regional School District Assessment.
I will move to recommend.
Katie moves, Joan seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Article 7, Community Preservation Program Direct Appropriation from Fund Balances.
Madam Chair, these, I'm not sure these are the final numbers yet, so I would suggest.
Just read the title.
Yeah, we'll, we can, we can discuss.
Are we talking about?
CPA, CPC.
Yeah, we voted CPC.
Right, but I'm not sure we have the current numbers, that's all, I'm not convinced about the current.
Yeah, I think we should wait on that, because I haven't had a chance to see what CPC has recommended for their, so it'd be helpful at the next meeting, maybe, Peter, if you could just quickly talk about that once they finalize their recommendations, and then we could vote our, because we're not going to print until after the next.
I mean, we have finalized the recommendation, so I, we voted on that Thursday night, so.
They haven't been forwarded to us, Peter, so.
Okay, well, I can send the spreadsheet around, we voted on it.
Well, we'll just vote on it on Monday, we're not going to print till after that, so we're fine, so if we could just pass over 7.
Okay. Capital Equipment Infrastructure and Design Services Bonding.
I will move to recommend.
Katie moves and Joan seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Kelly's Corner Improvement Initiative Supplemental Engineering and Appraisal Services Bonding.
I will move to recommend.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I'll second it, I'll second.
Do you want to move?
No, I was just gonna say, I don't know if everybody knows, the appraisal number has come down from approximately 350 to approximately 150, because it turns out the state is going to be responsible for paying for taking the properties that are on the state road, which, for whatever reason, you know, if you go along 27, it's a state road for a little while, and it turns into a town road, then it turns into a state road, then it turns into a town road, same way with 111, so it turned out the state's gonna take the properties that are theirs, and so we, we're 200 grand less than the original number that we were looking for, so.
So it's the appraisal services that this was about, and so appraisal services are dropped, I mean, the actual cost of the taking is gonna be something else, so.
But they'll be much less, because there'll be much less property, so.
Okay. So we, Katie and Joe moved and seconded, or Peter seconded, I'm lost. Anyhow, somebody moved and seconded, Katie moved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, okay. Capital Infrastructure Non-Bonding.
My only question on this, Steve, is I've seen a couple, and I've seen a couple gifts come through related to the bike share, and I know we have to appropriate the money, but I was wondering kind of where we were on total donations related to the bike share program, do you know?
I think we've gotten the match.
The match, right, so that will be covered by, okay, all right, that's good. Okay, I will move to recommend the Capital Infrastructure Non-Bonding article.
Okay, Katie moves and Joan seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Land Acquisition, 19 to 21 Maple Street Bonding, do we want to pass over?
We should defer it, defer it till next Monday, and same with Article 12.
Yep.
Oh, okay. And then, okay, now we have a bunch of collective bargaining agreements.
Those are all take no action.
At this point, we defer, we haven't even started bargaining yet.
Okay, now we're down to what on our list is item 17, but it's Accept Legislation Perky Meter Revenues and Expenses.
If nobody has questions on any of the ones on consent, can I make one?
Want to just go through all of them, does anybody have any concerns about any of these consent items? If so, if not, then can we just move to recommend all of them?
I will, that's what I'm gonna do. I'll move to recommend Consent Agenda, articles are currently listed as Articles 17 through 25.
Any second?
Second.
Who seconded, did you second? Okay, Katie moves and Ching Tsung seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, our placeholder, we have to hold off on because it needs more definition. Non-Bonding Resolution, Acton Citizens First Amendment Right to Criticize the Actions of Elected and Appointed Officials.
I'd like to defer on these next two, because we just saw them today, just have more time to talk about them.
Transfer Real Property 33 Knox Trail, is there any update on that, Mr. Manager?
You guys are going too fast for me.
We're just looking at the spreadsheet, I'm looking at the spreadsheet.
This is a property that we're gonna be acquiring through tax taking, we have not acquired it yet, but the Water District has expressed interest in it, and under state statute, town meeting could transfer the real property to the Water District, but it will have to be contingent on us doing a final real estate taking on it.
Okay, so we'll just hold off?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, Transfer Real Property for Cherry Ridge Road, now I presented this to a failed vote when it was supposed to be affordable housing, it now is not affordable housing, it's proposed housing for a veteran.
Well.
With a disability or.
I'm not sure, and discussing with town council, the feeling was that we couldn't restrict it necessarily to veteran, because there's no provision to guarantee a veteran in a resale. So it'd pretty much be a straight purchase, and you know, we could perhaps in the RFP have veterans preference or something like that, but.
Weren't the concerns with the neighbors about the septic and.
Right, and it did perk this past summer, we gave it a perk test, and it perked.
And it perked, okay.
But the fact is, that whole neighborhood has problems, they have high water table, and so the problems that they they were saying were peculiar to that lot actually are peculiar to the whole neighborhood, so. But, you know, the problem is, it's on the town's books, and so, yeah.
Yeah, we already own the property, right, so this would be to transfer it for what purpose again?
Well, the theory would be to sell it for a veterans house. But there's no guarantee it would remain a veterans house in the future.
Oh, you can't put a binding condition on if it gets resold in the future, you know, oh, okay.
I had suggested it last year's presentation, whenever it was, that, you know, if the neighbors wanted to make it into a little neighborhood park, they could all sort of chip in and buy it and make it, own it in common, but there was nobody keen, nobody stepping up to do that.
This transfers to the board as a?
No, we would be able to transfer it to a third party, so we'd put out an RFP, and you can write an RFP in a way such that it's only for somebody who will develop.
I mean, it's very similar to what we did on the railroad, excuse me, not railroad street, the school street parcel, where we sold it specifically for affordable housing. And this is different than our standard Article 41 that gives the town the right to sell foreclosed property, but that's at auction to the highest bidder, as opposed to trying to craft an RFP to how we wanna use the property.
It's my understanding that there is a group in town that's working to put together a house for disabled veteran that would be pretty much donated labor and materials, and then transferred to a disabled veteran for very low cost.
And they're interested in the property?
That's, yeah.
Do you think it's this for chair, because it's, you know, now I forgot the developer, but, you know, he's done some other good projects in town, and he, this is very important, he really, it was Parker Street, he did, I think it was a 40B, and he really wanted to have a house that was for disabled veteran, and it just didn't work out that way, so it's sort of been irking him that he wanted to have do something for a disabled veteran, and so, so maybe it's the same project. Okay, so do we have, do we want to take a position on this, it's basically just to authorize the town to sell it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend.
Katie moves and Joan seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining.
I'm gonna ask, we skip this one, I think we're gonna ask the Historical Commission to come in to speak to the board, but I don't know if they'll be able to come by our next meeting, is that when we're taking positions?
Right, because we have to, the warrant's going to the press the following week, the week of the 12th.
All right, let me talk to them again, but, so either they'll be here at the next meeting, or we defer it and vote it, and it's not printed, but this is related to updates they're proposing to the Chapter and Demolition Delay Bylaw, and they're still working on that a bit, so I'd like to defer.
Okay, so we'll defer on what is now Article 31, but will be something else, okay, so amend town bylaws citations for loose dogs, such.
The way we've been advised, that the way our general bylaws are written now, that if a licensed dog is, if the animal control officer catches a licensed loose dog, the board has to vote to issue a ticket. This warrant article would allow, would authorize the animal control officer to issue a ticket.
So it's one more task that we would be best not to have to deal with.
Unless you like to do it.
Oh, we still have to deal with dog bite cases, and, you know, it's just terrible, because we have to re-educate ourselves, and I always feel as if, why isn't the animal officer doing this stuff? Okay, somebody wanna recommend, this is a.
I will make a motion to recommend.
Katie moves and Joan seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Amend Town Bylaws Tree Warden Appointment, this is another oddity, right?
Well, this is an oddity, because apparently, it was, according to council, we probably should have a bylaw in place that defines how the tree warden is appointed, and there are a couple of choices here, and I guess I'm throwing this, actually, three choices, to see which way the board, we haven't totally finished writing this article. One choice would be a board of selectmen appointment, second choice would be a board of selectmen with the ability to delegate, and the third choice would be a town manager appointment, so I'm not sure which way the board wants to go, but we have not apparently been correct, I think the town manager has done it in the past without the technical legal sanction.
Oh my gosh, so Dean, you weren't legitimate all these years.
The, thank you, I was going to bring this up in Citizens Concerns about the tree warden, and then I realized that it's a discussion of the warrant, which is why I'm in front of you right now. Just a little bit of background, the tree warden position, when it was passed on the statewide back in the 1890s, in almost all towns, it was an elected position. And that was the situation for years, until it created a town manager here, and then all those positions, including highway surveyor, all got moved into appointments by the town manager. And when I was appointed by Chris Farrell 37 years ago, he felt that was the, the authority was under the town manager, and if you look at the, at the town charter, Section 4-3G7, I think that seems to address it. But be that as it may, it doesn't really matter who appoints, I think the important thing is that whoever holds a position actually be qualified. There is a state law, and it's Mass General Law 41, Section 106, that sets out some specific criteria for tree warden. Quote, "Such tree wardens shall be qualified by training and experience in the field of agriculture and licensed with the Department of Food and Agriculture." And when I retired completely back in June, there was a hiatus, and now I understand that the municipal properties superintendent, who has no qualifications whatsoever, has been appointed acting tree warden. That appears to me to be in violation of state law. More importantly, I think it just beggars good sense, because there are certain criteria that have to be followed, there's a background of understanding and experience that a tree warden should have, and the situation you've got right now is really not suitable, and places the town in huge liability. I've, I understand there was an attempt to bring in a part-time contract position. That frankly was boggled by the Human Resource Department, because for a professional position like that, they advertised at once in Action Unlimited, which is not considered a professional publication for arbrists. There was, we did have an internal candidate, who I was staying on for several years and mentoring. This person has all qualifications, but the only way this person could have taken that position would be to give up his full-time job to take on a part-time contracted unbenefited position, and obviously, no town employee in his right mind is going to do that. So I think it's a severe problem that the town has. I don't understand it, I can make all kinds of conjectures, but I'm not gonna get into that in a public hearing, but I, it's totally unsuitable. I've written up a letter, which I will give to Lisa, that can be distributed, that goes into more details about this, but I think however you want to appoint the tree warden, it's fine, but you should be complying with the state law, and frankly, with good sense, which has not been done since my retirement at the end of June of last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charter. Well, that was a lot of information, so it really comes down to, we have the three options that the town manager cited, we can appoint it officially, we can appoint with delegation to, I guess, staff people, or the town manager can appoint, and town manager has been the de facto appointeur, or pointer anyhow, and the question is whether that should continue. I will say that I really don't want the board to be involved in appointing the tree warden, only because we would end up, unless it's to delegate, and then it really becomes sort of a formality. only because we would end up, or unless it's to delegate, and then it really becomes sort of a, a formality. And I don't know if that's, it's necessary for us to be involved at all, but, um, thoughts from the board?
Katie? I agree with you. I think it makes sense to have the town manager do it and then I think we can make sure that, you know, the, the town manager is somebody who can make sure that we're following the requirements for who's appointed as the tree warden. So, I, I think it makes sense to go that way and then we figure it out going forward. But I know there was some issue about, you know, it was a part-time position and I think that's hard to fill as well and so I think we need to figure out how to, uh, address that so we get qualified applicants, um, and have a plan, uh, uh, to get somebody, um, who is actually, who is, you know, has the kind of requirements of this in place.
Peter?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have the town manager appoint the tree warden. I think what the town was trying to do was, uh, contract it out and for some reasons I don't really understand, uh, there were no contractors who would agree to perform the services. So, um, there's a big insurance requirement. Obviously, you're climbing trees, you need, you need a large liability insurance policy. So, anyway, but I, I think that's fine. I mean, if the town manager gets the authority to make the appointment, he can either decide to contract it to an outside, there are firms that do this, so, um, or hire a part-time person, I guess, to do it, or however resolve it, but it should, I, I agree, it should be, um, done. We need a tree warden.
Joan Jingson?
I agree with everything that's been said, so I think we.
My experience with tree people is that there are shrinking numbers of them who actually climb, other than in the buckets. Uh, we, we've had some trees taken down and it's really just marvelous to watch these people who actually climb up the tree and then they go up and they tie off branches, they saw them with the chainsaws and then they drop and they don't, so that you don't end up with big holes, craters in your lawn. No, it's really beautiful to watch. It scares me though. Um, and, and, but it's hard to find people who aren't driving the bucket, so. Alarm, alarm. Um, alright, so what about, uh, is, do we wanna recommend this then?
I think let's just defer it till we see it written up with the.
Do we just, I mean, but you have our guidance about how we're inclined to just continue, but make it official that the town manager does the appointment. Okay, amend bylaws, town bylaws, roadway work permits.
This is somewhat similar. You recall when, uh, when the town engineer was in front of you, I think it was the last meeting, to talk about street opening permits, et cetera. This bylaw would, would authorize, um, the issuance of, of, uh, of the, of the, of the street opening permit. So, once again, it's either the board of selectmen or, or delegate to the town engineer.
Katie?
Would this include ones for the natural gas? Cause I think that's been, um, kind of what initially brought up some of the natural gas issues and I worry that if we just delegate it to the town engineer, that if, say, in, in moving forward, we, we do have some sort of bylaw or anything related to that, um, right now, I think it would make sense to keep it with the board of selectmen, but I don't know if it covers that or if it's other kinds of.
Yeah, I, I think it would. I, you know, you may wanna think about, uh, the board of selectmen and/or the designees. The board could always have the flexibility to designate to another person.
I think that makes sense to me, cause then it, it preserves it with us until, or for certain ones we wanna designate perhaps. But I'd be comfortable with that.
So is it, there's gonna be more language, right, in the articles? So should, is this another one on which you wanna defer until we see the full write-up? Okay. Uh, and then land acquisition sidewalks.
Excuse me, these are easements?
Yes.
Uh, motion to recommend?
Second.
Katie moves, Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And then highway reimbursement program, chapter ninety.
Uh, motion to recommend?
Second.
Katie moves and Joan seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
The, the rest are all consent, so maybe we can move them as one.
From Article thirty-seven through forty-one? Somebody wanna move to?
I'll recommend, I'll move that we recommend Articles thirty-seven through forty-one.
Second.
Okay, um, Peter moved and, and Joan seconded.
Katie.
Katie, I'm sorry.
Other woman.
Okay, somebody out there. Katie, uh, Katie seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you. Um, now, what about, um, do you wanna wait until the next meeting to do assignments or do you wanna do the assignments now? I mean, there's some that are pretty logical.
I think we should wait and I found it was helpful, I think the year I did it and last year Peter did it, where the chair sort of did draft assignments and then we talk about it and if anybody has questions or concerns if there were.
Divvy if all the dreaded consent agenda.
Right, and if there's ones people like super wanna do, you know, email you in the meantime, but I found it just made it a little easier than going through each one.
Mrs. Chang?
Yeah, I have a question about Article twenty-eight. I know that it's a non-binding resolution, but I would go back to Atchison Callahan, who said that the article must talk about what, you know, what, what is actually being voted on. And Kmart does not own these parcels. So somehow, in the, you know, in this, in the title or someplace, you've got to put in Stop and Shop. Because Stop and Shop is the owner of the parcels and not Kmart.
Mr. Manager, um, you know, I know.
I, I, I don't have the petition in front of me, but, uh, usually you have to go with all the wording that the petitioner has put in. So that could be an issue to re-raise at the floor of town meeting.
Right. Wait, there's, there's a limited, council will review to make sure the format is correct for petition articles, but doesn't tinker too much with the content?
Oh, well, I was just, I mean, they, okay, they don't tinker with the content, but the, the, the title of the thing is misleading, shall I say.
Oh, you mean, you mean the article title?
It's totally, well, totally, it's totally misleading because, um, yes, it's totally misleading.
I don't remember if that title was from the petition proponent or from, or is that us? Cause if it, yeah, if it's, if it's on our side, then it could change.
The title on the petition as, as it was circulated is "Non-Binding Resolution for Town Meeting Investigate Buying the Kmart Parcels."
So you think you, so you think you have, you think you have to keep that?
I, I, that's been always the way I've been schooled by town council, is that a petition has been signed by the requisite amount of people and that's what they signed and you can't really change the wording once it's turned in.
Well, I s- I still think it's totally misleading and somehow should be, as you say, maybe it'd be brought up at, at town meetings itself, but I think that, um, you know, people wanna buy, people want Kmart to stay and, and this sort of is, um, fuel for that misconception and I think it's unfortunate.
Thank you, Ann. I'm sure we're gonna hear from you at a town meeting, right?
I, I.
Yes, Mr. Barry?
I just would question whether that logic applies to the explanation of the, of the, uh, of the warrant article as well. I mean, I think the, uh, the, uh, proponent of this has drafted an explanation and the town may have some ability to, um, write its own explanation of what this is about. I'm not sure, but.
Well, I mean, there, I mean, I have seen, um, kind of, uh, counter arguments or alternative arguments, uh, in summaries before.
I have a question, Mr. Barry. Why would we wanna develop our own explanation of what this article is about? It's not our article.
Because it makes no sense to petition to talk to Kmart about buying property that they don't own.
Well, I think as, as Mr. Manager has said, you know, that's probably gonna come out on the floor of town meeting. People are gonna say, wait a minute, you know, Kmart doesn't own this property.
Ms. Chang is pointing out that anybody reading the warrant would be misled by this, the title to this.
Well, I mean, can we have like a little editor's comment, town comment, you know?
I think that's what Steve was suggesting, is that there are alternative explanations.
If that is, if that passes muster with, I don't know, with town council or whoever we need to consult, then let's do that.
And I think it makes sense too that in our, you know, we'll take a position on this and, and whoever is probably you, Peter, delivering our position on this, you can talk about, you know, any concerns we might have, which might include that, those kinds of issues, regardless of how we vote, those things should be brought up and I think we have the right to do that. Um, yeah, it, it's frustrating, that's the title of it, but as Steve pointed out, unfortunately, I think we do have to go with those.
I'm just going back to, uh, uh, you know, the town council that I remember from long ago, whose point was that if something like this came up, you couldn't proceed on it because it was misleading. So therefore something, you know, you've got to speak to the presenter and ask her to put in, you know, to correct, correct. Yeah, correct what she, correct her mistakes, correct her, what is, um, what I think is misleading.
I think it's worth asking town council about, but I don't know.
I mean, I, I also have problems with Mr. Nicholms, but this was more important right now.
Thanks, Ann. Alright, um, so we'll wait to, to, uh, assign until next week. I will work probably with the town manager on that list roster. So, next item, the next, uh, two items are really Peter. Number five is volunteer appreciation reception and proposed volunteer of the year award. I, I, I had Lisa add twenty nineteen, cause I wanted to make sure people understood that this was not for this year. Originally, I think the idea was to do something for this year, but it's gonna be complicated and there isn't that much time left, uh, before the awards would have to be given. And then the next item after that is the VCC's revised charge, which is pretty straightforward. So Peter, if you wanna explain what, you know, what's going on with the, the reception. Um, I agree that, you know, the tradition that is one-year-old that you started would be a good thing to do again this year.
Uh, yeah, I think that, uh, Lisa gave us three dates in May. We did it on May twelfth last year. There are three Friday nights in May that, um, were available. I don't know, Lisa, if I have that email. Do you know what those dates were, that when NARA is available in May for the, for the, um, volunteer reception? My iPad's dead anyway, so, but, um, I think he gave us three weekends, three Friday nights. Okay, Janet, I think was concerned about the graduation, pardon me?
Can you email those to us?
Yeah, I just, I just was, yeah.
Oh, we can pick them next, next week, maybe. Yeah, okay, alright, okay, sure. Um, I mean, this is for discussion. I want to continue the discussion. This is a short-term goal that, uh, was voted by the selectmen, um, at our goal-setting session last year. Uh, I mean, I, these are concepts again for discussion. I, I changed it from a volunteer of the year award to, uh, just recognition for extraordinary service as a volunteer. I just seemed, uh, I didn't think that a competition was appropriate, but that's, I mean, I don't have any strong feelings about any of this. I'd like to move this along if we could. Uh, I, uh, I came up with this wa- well, first of all, what? You'll notice the plaque over here, it doesn't have Francis Faulkner Senior. I Googled them and there was a senior after it, so I'll, we'll have to make sure that's correct, but that's what I'm proposing for the award. Colonel Francis Faulkner Senior Award for exemplary volunteer service. Why? Um, this language is just out of my own head while following up on Steve's comment about, uh, the employee of the year awards. It's just kind of going above and beyond the ordinary, um, requirements of, uh, the job for the employee award and this is going above and beyond dedication to the town, uh, by serving on board, boards over, uh, my language for people out there is to recognize exceptional service to the town through valued dedicated volunteer service on town boards or committees over many years, thereby improving the town's culture and the lives of acting residents. When? I've had a change of thought on this, um, prior to the start of the first day of each annual town meeting. I, I mean, we talked about that last time. I thought town meeting might be a problem, um, but it was mentioned that the employee awards are on the second night, so we could do it on the first night. Then I procrastinated on doing this, so we're too close to town meeting for this year. And, uh, Janet pointed out that Peter Ashton would have to be involved in this. He may have an issue with, um, this, uh, before kicking off the first night of town meeting, so we'd have to coordinate with him. So my current thinking is maybe we do this as part of the volunteer reception if we're gonna make that a, uh, an annual event at NARA and that would be handing out these, um, awards, um, uh, with all the other volunteers in town around. So, and it'd be in May and, uh, you know, the people could bring their families or whoever was getting recognized could, um, invite their own, um, guests. So, that's one thought I had. Then, one thing I left out of here, out of this what, why, when and how, was who, and Janet raised that also. We, I think we had this discussion before as well. Um, committees, obviously, that the selectmen appoint members of, that leaves the finance committee, which I think, from my memory of the previous discussion, was we thought it's probably a good idea to include them. And the memorial library, um, I mean, I would suggest elected officials probably should not be included. The housing authority or the, or the library, but the FinCom, it seems to me, is, is probably appropriate. So those are my thoughts about it. Um, and, and how we do it, two options, I guess, we talked about. Um, one was, um, uh, board members nominating a s- a single person and submitting names to the chair and vice chair and they would pick the final, um, person. Or each board member could recognize, um, someone from the various committees that we all serve as liaisons to. That would meet five every year and, um, like, my concern, on, on one hand, is some people have moved away. There are people that would, you know, Ken Segay Hughes, I'm thinking of, was on the CPC forever, on the Housing Authority forever. Big contributions to the town, moved away. It would've been nice to say, you know, give him something before he goes and have him remember that there's a plaque in town hall that has his name on it. So, um, that continues to happen. The other question about who, I guess, is, does it include people who are still in town or even maybe who have moved away, who have resigned from boards but meet whatever criteria we would come up with? So, those, those are all my thoughts and I'm just, again, trying to keep this moving along, so.
So, Peter, so you're still sort of tentatively looking at trying to do something, maybe this year at the, the annual reception in May? Cause, uh, did you have any thought as to what it is that you would be presenting people who are being recognized with a plaque?
Yeah, well, I got a copy of the, um, certificate that, uh, the town gives to the employee of the year. Um, I think we would pretty much replicate that, use this language, whatever language we come up with about, um, what they're being recognized for. Um, and, uh, you know, I'm suggesting some other kind of honorarium. I don't know whether it would be, I mean, the Conscom used to give us framed, you know, sketches of town center. I, I don't know. We give selectmen the glass.
They've stopped doing that. I didn't get one.
I still have mine at home on the wall, but, um, we give the glass replica of the, of the monument to selectmen who leave. I mean, would we give them maybe, you know, uh, some gift certificate to a restaurant in town or something like that?
That gets, well, that's a nice idea, but it gets complicated. I mean, I think the selection process is probably something that we need to talk about, whether, you know, I was thinking, somebody, I don't know if it was you or somebody else, said, you know, maybe if you have liaison committees, it would be helpful to have, I don't know, to have the chairman of the committee, you know, suggest somebody. I, you know, I honestly, it would be, I would have a hard time honestly picking somebody from some of my committees where there are several people who really, uh, to strike me as being standouts and, you know, I, well, I don't know, it'd be helpful to have somebody else make the choice, so I could just sort of take the suggestion back to somebody, but, but, yeah. And then the idea is then we have all these nominations from, among all of our committees and then we put them all together and we all have to decide who the top five are. It's just, you know, it's.
There's no sense in saying that. It's that we would, each selectman would pick one, somebody from one of your committees, which I think that, I was thinking about it originally, I thought that the option two, where we would narrow it down to one person, but I kind of like the idea of each selectman picking somebody that they know and. and they've worked with and have seen their contribution through the committees that they serve as liaison to. Um, like you said, I mean, there's people on all of my committees that I can think of, um, but the point is that it's not a one-year thing. It's, it's multi-year, and so over time, people get, um, recognized. I think the one question I have is, like you said, Peter, do we just limit it to people currently serving, or do you want to include, you know, former as well? Um, which gets tricky, because then is it, you know, I mean, they, first of all, people are in multiple committees, and then is it that, you know, I, they were formally on one of the committees I was liaison to, but I do think there are a lot of people that, you know, are worthwhile, um, that it would be worthwhile to, to, to recognize. Um, and I go back and forth on your recommendation about doing it in May versus the first night of town meeting. I think the reason the first night of town meeting is nice is that it hopefully gets to a broader audience, um, you know, so more people in town would hear about the kinds of volunteers we have and what they do, but I do also like the idea of doing it in May, where you can have a little bit more of an event, and people's families can come and things like that. Um, and then, I, you know, hopefully, we could write, you know, send an article or something to the paper and have it in there, and then that's a way to get it out to the public. So, I, I'd be in support of the, the May option. Um, and then I think you have to figure out, though, if you want to give them something, where that funding is coming from, um, you know, just get an estimate of how much we're talking about spending, um, and, you know, is that something we can do within the town budget, or do we need to seek outside, uh, kind of support for it? But otherwise, I like option one and doing it in May.
Peter, did you have a follow-up, or?
I, I mean, I would just, I, you know, the issue of people who have gone off boards, I mean, there are people I can think of who have been on, serving on boards for a very long time and have now resigned and don't do it anymore, but, uh, it seems to me that we got to cut it off at some place, and maybe currently serving people is, makes more sense. Um, I don't know, we can talk more about that. Um, I think if each select person did it, um, that, uh, you'd have the option. You could go to the chair of the committee and say, who do you think is the best person on this committee?
Just figure out, yeah.
So, uh, what was the other, oh, the, one of the other things I think we could do is, is have a plaque in town hall with names on it, so, you know, that we could add every year, um, that would recognize volunteers. Um, I mean, we have wonderful talent, extremely talented people in town that, um, contribute an awful lot of time to help and run the town with no, um, financial, uh, retribution at all. So, I think it's well past the time when we should, uh, um, start recognizing them, and, uh, that's the other thing I thought about each select person doing. It kind of, you know, it's, it's rewarding to recognize somebody's service, so each one of us, within that circumstance, be able to have that satisfaction. So, um, again, they're all just, um, suggestions. I, I, I'm leaning toward May, if we could do it. Um, maybe we could put this on the agenda for next week and give us five minutes to kind of get, now that people have had this discussion, um, get, um, more, um, people's thoughts and, and then move forward from there, but, um, so.
Everybody have all your selections ready to go.
Yeah, we would, uh, we, we would pick the, anyway, next week, we would pick the date. I mean, and we don't need to do that with an agenda either. We could pick a date by email, so.
Yeah, no, you can do it by email, yeah. I do, I mean, about, about people who are our former members, especially recently, in the last two years, who really were wonderful people on their respective committees, I, I would, I do like the idea of recognizing them while there are still people around who will remember them. I think, yeah, I mean, there's a limit, because at some point, time marches on, and people, I mean, people don't even remember who used to be on the board of selectmen, you know, there's just, um, so, after a certain number of years, but, you know, if it's fewer than five years ago, there are a number of people who, you know, I, I've encountered on different committees and who I just thought were fabulous, and who I really was sorry to see step down. That's, you know, that's how they marked for me of whether a person is really, uh, worthy of recognition, is if you don't want them to leave ever, but, um, you know.
Okay, so picking a date, I mean, I think we could do that by email. One of the three weekends in May that, uh, Lisa identified, but, um, then the question of, uh, first of all, the language of what the certificate would say is here under why that, that I put that language. I don't know if people want to mark that up, or think it, there's a better way to express the gratitude, but, um, and then the question about people who have gone off boards for a period of time, and, uh, and whether we actually do it in May or not, um, those are issues that we do have to decide in the meeting, I think. So, whether we're ready to do that tonight, or you want to talk about it next week?
I think, I think maybe we should continue, we could continue the discussion. Uh, you know, it's a work in progress, and there's a lot, it's new, so, um, people are feeling their way around. I don't know if people are ready to, I'm not fully ready. Um, I need...
I would be in favor of May, and that each selectman submit a name, so that there'd be five. No, option one.
Or option one, right?
Option one.
Yeah.
So, let's just, uh, assume that we can move forward as if we're, that's what we're going to do, and then try to flesh out, like, what the award is going to say, and, you know, what it's going to consist of. Um, you know, one of the things, thoughts you might have is just do the, the award, the plaque, or whatever it is, and then, you know, maybe you could add something after, if, you know, if you figure out that there's a way to do something else. Um, but sometimes it's just the plaque that means something to somebody. Other times, if you're in a paid job, sometimes it's the money that means something, and, you know, it's just...
Right. Well, each selectman could give a little, um, summary of the service when they, when they gave out this recognition, I guess. Um, so, and then, what, if people, uh, why don't we do it this way? People can, um, if you have, you know, markups of this language for putting on the certificate, exceptional service, whatever, just email me, and I, and I'll, I'll consolidate that and come back. Um, and, uh, then it seemed like people are leaning toward May, um, and five candidates selected, and then the only question is about, um, people who have gone off a board, so I'll, I'll rework this and take those into consideration, and then we can talk about it some more.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Ann?
I was going to say, you should probably do it before they die. Um, I, I'm sorry, I mean, uh, Bill Flood just died, and he would have been a good candidate, but, um, I think that you should do emeritus people who have been, you know, who, after having reached the age of eighty-six or whatever, have, uh, resigned from the library, the arboretum, the cemetery commission, I'm trying to think what, what else he was on, but I think you should consider giving him a, an award, a different kind of an award, a special award.
We have the, that reminds me of the, there's this, this cane that Lisa and I, we have this cane, and it was a special cane. It was in...
This is for the in-town.
Yeah, and it was for the oldest person in town, and we talked about how to revive the tradition of giving, presenting the cane form, just sort of as a formality to the oldest person in cane. The person could have it for maybe a bit of time, but then you have to take it back, because these canes were distributed around the communities in Massachusetts, and a lot of them were lost forever, because, uh, the people who were honored with the cane forgot or didn't turn the, back the cane, so, but we do have, we still...
The problem is, you're the oldest person until you're no longer the oldest person, and so it falls to your estate to turn back the cane, and I think when you're going through stuff, you might not know what this cane is.
Yeah, and I think our, what our cane was lost, and then somebody found it in, you know, somebody's estate, somebody, the family member turned it back in, but it was, it was a very interesting history to the canes, but, all right. So, uh, and the next item is also yours, the VCC revised charge, which probably is more straightforward.
Yeah, the VCC came to meet with us, um, a couple of months ago, I guess, and we had a discussion about their, uh, charge and various questions they had. Uh, it turns out that the, nobody could find the original VCC charge, if it ever did exist. So, um, the committee, um, led by Greg, um, drafted this charge, which reflected the responses we gave them to their questions, and, um, I'm recommending that the board, the board of selectmen vote to, uh, accept it.
Comments, questions from the board? Motion to recommend?
I'll move, I'll move that we, uh, accept the, uh, charge for the volunteer coordinating committee. As presented.
So, Peter moves, and Katie seconds. Any further discussion? And others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you, Peter. Now, uh, this last item under selectmen's business is something that sort of, uh, I don't think the board knows very much about, and I didn't know very much about it until Joan mentioned that she had been told that she could sign the paperwork for it, and I thought, paperwork for what? What are we, so I, I started digging into it, and, and I, I knew Kristin Gichard had been involved in it, and I sent her an email about it. Of course, it was last week, when she was busy giving birth, so I didn't hear back from her. So, fortunately, Robert Hummel, uh, stepped in, and then so did Caitlin, to say, we've got, we've got information, we can help you with this. So, this has been, uh, it's a, it's essentially, if you look at the materials, this is, it's, the commitment is not, it, right now, it's not monetary, um, and if we join this network, there's a potential for some grants. It is, uh, the, the, it's aspirational, it's pretty, the goals are pretty consistent with a lot of, of the things that we're trying to do in our community, anyway, to be welcoming to, to, uh, senior citizens, uh, and, and just to improve transportation and a lot of other services that will serve not only seniors, but a lot of people, um, in-town, uh, better. So, but, um, there is a blank, there's a sort of a template, um, application. There is also a so-called commitment letter, which has to come from a town official, and, and, uh, so the application, Robert has assured me, the planning department can fill in with all the appropriate information, uh, once we voted, if that's, if we are inclined to recommend or approve the proposed application to join this aging-friendly or age-friendly, uh, network of communities. Um, then the only other question is, uh, whether you want the commitment letter to be signed by the town manager, uh, the board of selectmen, or our magic rep, Joan Gardner, who was on the board of selectmen. You could also have it be two of those people. I mean, I was thinking, well, you could have town manager, because it's town staff who gets involved in a lot of these things, anyway, as witness the fact that, that Kristin was the one who knows so much about it, and has kind of been a driving force behind it, I guess. Uh, she goes to all the magic meetings. But, um, comments, questions, recommendations? Katie?
Yeah, so, um, in my other life, I mean, the job that actually pays me, um, we actually do, um, some workaround to aging and caregiving, and so I've heard about these, uh, the age-friendly communities, and was quite excited to see this proposal coming up for us. So, thank you to the planning department and others for, for bringing this to our attention, and, um, and hopefully adding us in. So, I'm very much in support of it. Um, I was happy to see, I think it was in the magic, um, application, that they mentioned specifically the Purple Table, um, uh, initiative that's started at the Red Raven, one of the restaurants in town, because I think that's a really, um, interesting, um, proposal that, that they, um, are doing, and apparently are trying to spread to, to other restaurants that helps people, um, with, uh, who have family members with dementia, or, um, you know, say, other disabilities or, or other issues, make reservations that sort of acknowledge, uh, dinner or, or restaurant reservations that acknowledge, um, that they might need extra, um, support, or a, uh, you know, a quieter area in the restaurant, things like that. And it's very interesting. So, it's stuff like that, that can be, um, that is, you know, uh, part of what makes you an age-friendly community, um, as well as the, the bigger aspirational things around transportation and housing. Um, and the other thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to see our, um, nursing service reflected in this as well, because I think it's, as one of the, um, uh, specific, uh, I think they had said there was an area where you can add, um, some of the specific things that we might do above and beyond housing and transportation. We already have a nursing service. That's very much a part of being an age-friendly community. We're one of two communities that has our own, um, nursing service, so I think that that should be, uh, recognized here as, as something important that we do. So, otherwise, I'm very much in support of it, and again, thank you to the planning department for, um, spearheading this. Um, and I'm agnostic on who signs it. I think it makes sense, maybe, to have, though, the town manager and somebody from the board, but I, either way's fine.
I would maybe suggest town manager and Joan, just because then you have the belt and suspenders. It'll assure that there's somebody who's paying attention to it, but, um, I would, I was noticing, this is an aside, I thought of the nursing service, because you know me, I've periodically been critical of the financing, but I was reading about, um, hospitals. I think it must have been the Boston Globe, the Sunday Globe, but anyhow, it was about the fact that hospitals are closing, they're shrinking, and they're increasingly having more at-home services or services outside of the hospital, which is actually beneficial, because one of the things that hospitals seem to be really good at is increasing infections and things like that, and, and unintentionally, but, and then people do better when they're in a home environment. There are a billion people coming in to deal with them, but, you know, I thought, well, I wonder if that's something the nursing service could, you know, obviously, a hospital might have its own, own staff people or whatever, but at some point, they might outsource to other services, yeah.
They, they do a lot with that, and have, that's one of the things that the nursing service task force helps with, is, um, not only kind of raising awareness among citizens that you can choose if you get, um, home services, that you have a right to choose who you want that to be from, and highly recommend choosing the Acton Nursing Service, which has, uh, incredible reviews that are better than, uh, the state average and national averages. Um, but also, um, working with doctors' offices and others to make referrals to, um, to the Acton Nursing Service as well. So, that definitely is part of the work that they do, and, um, yes, uh, home health services are increasing nationwide and statewide, and a large part of that is, again, this idea of trying to help people age at home and in their community. And to do that, you need to have a variety of services, some of which is health-related, which is where my job comes in.
Joan, you have something to say?
I met with Franny and Kristen, and she wasn't sure she'd make it through the week, but in addition to, um, transportation and housing, we talked about isolation, and, um, working with, um, the first responders on identifying them. Other towns have, uh, safety boxes or keys that the safety people have, so that if I fell down in my house and I was there for three days, nobody would find me, um, that they could check. And the other, the Massachusetts State Police has recommended these, um, internet neighborhood...
Good. Uh, did, well, virtual version of what I think Dory Hunter had way back, sort of the neighborhood check, you, it was like, yeah, it fanned out, you had, each person had to go and check on some people, yeah. Okay, no, well, that's good. Any other comments? Nope? Okay. Um, so, I guess we should just, uh, what I can do is, I can talk to the town manager or work with Lisa on this letter, get it sort of, because it's drafted from an I, and I think it should be we. Um, and then maybe, I think it would be good to note that our board of selectmen has voted to, to authorize or approve the application and also the submission of the letter, so, um, but, uh, maybe we have a motion to move forward with the application and the... Yeah, so, well, Robert, Robert, who's, said he wasn't going to be here for the whole meeting, but still is here, he said he was gonna, they would fill in the blanks, they would, because I think that people have been working on this, uh, even though we don't know very much about it. Um, so, I think there are other people more familiar with it, so.
I'll move that we submit an application to, uh, become a part of the AARP WHO network of age-friendly communities.
Second.
And then with the, the letter, which town manager and Joan will sign, so I, I will work on that, okay. Um, so, Peter moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Finally, consent agenda. Uh, item eight, sewer betterment waiver enclosing forty-three to forty-five School Street. Item nine, EDC membership update, Anne Chang, Josh Fischel, full members, Mike Majors, Peter Daniel, associate members, and Shirley Ming, at-large associate member. Item ten, approved meeting minutes, January eighth, January twenty-two, February five, twenty eighteen. Item eleven, approved executive session minutes, June five, July three, August seven, September eleven, September twenty-five, December eighteen, twenty seventeen, and January eight, twenty eighteen. Item twelve, refunded request, building department. Item thirteen, multiple one-day alcoholic beverage license, Theater Three. Item fourteen, one-day alcoholic beverage license, congregation, Bethel Mahim, March three, twenty eighteen. Item fifteen, accept gift, council on aging. Gift of fifty dollars from Jane Sacks to be used for building furnishings at the senior center. Item sixteen, accept gift, rec... Item 16, accept gift, recreation department. Gift totaling $1,500 from Emerson Hospital to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Events. Item 17, accept gift, recreation department. Gift totaling $500 from Life Care Center of Acton to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 18, accept gift, recreation department. Gift totaling $500 from Visiting Angels to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 19, accept gift, recreation department. Gift, food gift totaling $200 from Stock and Chop for use at the 2018 Winter Carnival. Item 20, accept gift, recreation department. Gift totaling $500 from Concord Tea Cakes to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 21, accept gift, recreation department. Gift totaling $1,000 from Digital Credit Union to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 22, accept gift, planning department. Gift totaling $4,500 from Protech to be used toward the bike sharing program. There's the sponsor. Item 23, request to dispose of obsolete items at the Memorial Library. Item 24, committee appointment, Chun Sheng, Bill Fu, associate member, council on aging.
Motion to approve consent agenda items eight through 24.
Second.
Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion to adjourn? Anybody?
So moved.
Second.
Katie moves, and Peter seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Good night.